At the very end. Communication, right? Discussion. Okay. Yes. Mayor, looks like Jake is online. Okay. Jack. Jack is online, not Jake. Okay, we'll call to order the study meeting of West Valley City Council. It is June 21st, 2022, and it is 4:30. We are in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present, either online or in person. We will now go to the minutes of June 14th. Is there any discussion or a motion on the minutes?
Motion to move for the minutes.
Okay, so I have a second. We have a motion and a second. I'll in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And they cuss. Thanks, Jake. Are there any changes to this afternoon's regular meeting? Does anybody have any questions on this regular meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our first item of business, which is the public hearing. And I'll turn the time over to Ms. Cottle.
Thank you. Steve Pastrick is going to help us with this one, and he's here in person tonight. So I'll just come on up.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, turn my page fast enough.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director. So this item will pull up on our first slide here. So the property is located at 3789 South 5200 West. It's 1.93 acres. The zoning currently on the property is A, or the agricultural zone. And the requested zoning is the R18 zone. And the general plan does anticipate what we call low-density residential, which would be three to four units to the acre. So you can see here the property outlined in red. There is a single house on the property. There are a lot of trees, so it's hard to see. It's this kind of white area here. And then the property right now is surrounded by other homes. Here's just a close-up of that. You can see the existing home a little bit better here. Here's the zoning in the area. So you have this kind of pale green colors, the agricultural zoning. So you can see a few pockets of that. But to the north and the east of this property is zone R18. And then you do have R110 zoning across the street to the west. In this case, the concept plan, this one's a little bit harder. So you have a closer-up version. But the proposal will be for a total of seven lots on if the zoning is approved. And the idea would be to have, and you can see a little bit better in this next one, four lots right along 5200 West with three flag lots in the back. And then one of those lots would be for the existing home, which again is approximately here on, you can see on the site. Just a few other images. So this is to give you an idea, again, a lot of trees on the site currently. Unfortunately, a lot of those are elms that are not the best of trees. So that's looking to the southeast. Here's another image looking to the northeast. You can see the home here, the existing home on the right side of the image. Here's another close-up. This is, the home was built in the 30s. And so you can see a nicer brick home. So the developer, in this case, Ken Millen, his preference would be to try to retain the home and keep that on one of the lots that's being proposed. These would be the homes across the street on the west side of 5200 West. Just another shot looking west. This would be the home that's to the south of the property. And finally, the home that's on the north side of the property. So just to go back to the concept for a minute. So under this concept, the applicant is asking for an exception on lot width. So in the R18 zone, there is a minimum frontage or width requirement of 80 feet. So in order to do this type of a layout, where all the lots easily meet the minimum area requirements, but those ones in the front would be short on the frontage. So the developer's asking for an exception on the frontage for those lots. And then by way of the development agreement, which is required in this situation, they're proposing that for the lots in the back, the homes would vary between, so a rambler would be 2,000 square feet, and then a multi-level would be 3,000 square feet or larger. And then on the front, they're proposing, excuse me, go back. So the front four lots, of course, excepting the existing house, those would be 2,000 square feet for a rambler, and then 2,500 square feet if it were a multi-level for those homes that are in the front. Just hitting on some of the high points. All of the homes would have a three-car garage. They have a few interior commitments in terms of just the inside quality. And then as far as the architecture goes, they would essentially follow the standards we had in place prior to some recent changes. So basically, in terms of light materials and other architectural features, they would follow the housing standards that we had, in effect, back into 2021. So, and that summarizes this application.
Okay, thank you. To the council, any questions or comments?
Question about three lots in the fund. He says the fund is already, how short is that, Steve?
Yes, so of the four, three are 70. And then the one on the south, the far southwest corner is 71 and change. So basically, 70 feet is what's being shown here.
And we need help.
So the R18 zone requires 80. So that would be basically a 10-foot exception for those. And certainly, there's no requirement per se to grant that exception. The one, I will say, one of the reasons that the applicant is requesting that is trying to make a lot fit around that existing home. You know, when they built the home, they didn't take in consideration, you know, future subdivisions. So they're trying to work around that, as well as the, you know, making space for the access to those flag lots. So that's, they're trying to make that all work, given just the dimensions of the property.
Would it still mean to go to Board of Adjustment for that exception?
So, good question. The council, by development agreement, can make that kind of an exception. The board also could do that by variance, but this is another route, by doing it by development agreement.
Do you have any public feedback at Plan Commission?
On this one, I don't recall anyone coming out and speaking for or against this one at the Plan Commission.
And then for the flag lots, are either one of the entrances a public street width?
No, so in the discussions we had about the public versus private streets, the discussion, as I recall, was we were not including flag lots in that discussion, meaning that in the case of a flag, that individual still owns that piece of property. So they're not, it's not like an association. They have their own ownership out to the street. And in the way that the ordinance that's working its way through the process is, basically says you can't, you can't cross another property to get to a public street. So if you're, you know, thinking about like an association or something like that, so you have to have your own direct access to the street.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
What about the setback behind the existing home to the property line as drawn in this rendering? Do they have, does that appear to have enough setback?
I believe so, and I'll confirm that with the applicant. But the requirement would be at least 20 feet. So I can confirm that with these dimensions, that they would be able to meet that. These lots in front are a little deeper than what you would typically see. They're about, on this concept, it's 130 feet. So usually, you know, minimum for R18, you'd have 80 by 100, so.
Go back to our street ordinance. We, the flag lots pertain, does it pertain to the width? Since it's a private road, I thought we kind of standardized our road width.
We did put in some standards for new public. So we created, we created two new public street cross-sections for like townhomes or condominiums. But then for private streets, we're basically just banning those altogether. Like, a private street would no longer be an option. In this case, we're not, it wouldn't be, or a flag lot would not be considered a private street because it's all part of the same piece of property. So you're not, there's no shared scenario there.
It's just a long driveway. So a minimum of 20 feet is a driveway access, then?
Correct, correct.
So the guy in the back, lot number three and lot number four, they have to do have basement.
So they have their, yeah, lots two and three have their own piece of property that goes all the way out to 5200 West.
But that reminds me, is it, are we gonna, are we, or can we require them to have a private lane sharing agreement? Because they're sharing that lane, lots two and three.
So they would have, in the case of two and three, they would each have their own utilities out to the street. But then there would be, at least between those two, they would be able to drive over each other's 12 feet in that case.
So they, each driveway isn't 20 feet?
So in the.
To share, it's 12 on each.
Right, so whenever we've had two flag lots, we have, we've done 24 feet. So 12, each owner has 12 feet. And the reason, one of the reasons for that is so that they have their own property for the utilities that go out to 5200.
Just my experience is they haven't put the utilities on each side. They've put it down in the middle. And then when there's issues with the asphalt, that's why you do a lot of lane sharing agreements. So there's a little bit of teeth in how you manage those repairs in the future.
In our experience with Granger Hunter, at least on the utility issue, they've actually required separate lines for each lot. And that's so that, you know, one, the water and sewer line for one lot would be in there 12 feet, and then the other would be in the other 12 feet.
So the one on the north has 20 feet.
Correct.
And then the other have 24 shared.
Correct.
We each have 12.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on the agenda, we have two resolutions. I want to save those to the communication when Dan gives up and gives his item there, because they both pertain to this. So we'll go on to the consent agenda. And I didn't really see anything out of the ordinary.
Nope, they're not. They're just like normal. We do often have these reappointments. And you saw the list of those folks being reappointed, all very familiar names, exceptional, exceptional people who have a lot of service to the city. So unless there are questions on that, or the storm drain isn't there?
Just a quick question on D. The ending date of that term, correct?
Is Board of Adjustment your five-year terms?
She's only been on for several years. She doesn't know how long she served. Someone tell her to apply again.
She shows up and they send her home. That's when I would say, you're done. Which I don't think they're going to do for a while. Did anybody have any questions on those?
Just clarifying question on the PSRB. We identified the chair, and also on the Clean and Beautiful, we identified the chair. But it's my understanding that the Board of Adjustments, they elect. So that's kind of a different situation there.
Okay, good question. That's it. We'll move to the communication, and we'll go to the Bangator Highway update. And ladies, so Alex?
Yes.
Okay, you'll introduce yourself at the front there?
The presentation, hopefully. Great. So yes, I am Alex Fisher-Willis. I am with Udah. I'm the project manager over the Bangator Highway Environmental Study. Some of you may remember Brian Allen. He presented, oh gosh, six or seven months ago for the 4,700 South project. He's moved on to a new position, so I've taken over. We have a couple of updates, both on 4,700 South as well as 4,100 South to California Avenue. So we'll start with 4,700 South first. So currently, 4,700 South, the environmental document was signed this spring, and it is funded for construction. However, they are going to commission this, actually this Friday, to request more funds to hopefully incorporate some of the changes and other things we've seen needed with a lot of these projects. A lot of the costs have gone up substantially, which I'm sure you guys know with all the construction projects coming up.
Just a small $200 million?
Yeah, just a little bit. Not a whole lot. So right now, we're on schedule. We have been meeting with the BOR and Jordan Valley Water District to design the Aqueduct relocation. And currently, the schedule is to have that constructed next year. And hopefully, the roadway will be funded to the point we can start construction on the roadway itself in 2024. With that, Marwan Farah will be the project manager over the construction of it. So that one, we've officially handed off, and our team won't have to worry about it too much more, hopefully.
So have you made the decision over or under?
No, that has not been decided yet. Depending on how much we get funded through commission, that'll help encourage that decision. We've also had a lot of conversations with Dan and his team on how much we may or may not need from West Valley on that. So I live in West Valley. I'd love to see it under, so I'm hoping it goes that way. Yes. So 4,100 South to California Avenue is our next phase of Bangator Environmental Study. Originally, we were looking to do separate studies at 4,100, 3,500, 201 in California, and then kind of a global study, 35th to 201. This was kind of the analysis that we've done in the past on the other interchanges that we've grid-separated to this point. We've just looked at the interchange, did a small environmental document. But as we started to dig into this particular project, there's a lot more that needs to be looked at. So here's kind of the graphic of the area where we're looking at. And this will be incorporated into one big document. We started our analysis. The study goal is to convert the whole freeway system to a grid-separated freeway, similar to what we've done in the south. With the 4,700 South project, we also have 9,800, 134th, and 27th West funded for construction. Once those are built, everything south of 47th will basically be grid-separated. Everything north will then need to be converted. So as you guys, I'm sure, are aware, once you remove those intersections with signals, that increases the safety, especially on these high-speed roads, and also improves travel time for the commuters. Some of the unique elements of this section, as I already mentioned, the Jordan Valley Aqueduct, it pretty much follows the alignment of Bangator Highway, south of 47th, all the way to 3,100 South. So we've been coordinating with VRR and Jordan Valley Water District very closely on that. So it's definitely one of the big challenges. We also have pedestrian bridges at 41st and 3,100 South. We met with Granite School District last week, and they both expressed the desire to make sure we keep those pedestrian crossways available.
Yeah, so if we go under on all of our intersections, we won't have to have the pedestrian crossways, right?
In theory, unfortunately, everything north of 3,500 South has a very high water table. Like, we're talking three feet below the ground level. And to go underneath at those locations would require a whole pump systems and whatnot. So as far as what we're seeing, anything north of 4,100 South most likely will not be able to go under. We're, like I said, I'm really encouraging them to do 47th under. And 41st might be kind of a hybrid option, probably not as drastic as 126 South, but similar to where 41st would have to come up a little bit, and then Bangator, sorry, Bangator would have to go down a little bit, and 41st would have to go up a little bit, but it wouldn't be as drastic. That's what we're hoping for. At least, that's what I'm hoping for. But we'll flush that out in the environmental document. We also have the high school and the medical center and the golf course that we could potentially be impacting within West Valley's boundaries. One of the reasons we decided to look at this section in one big document rather than intersection by intersection is the close proximity of all the intersections along Bangator right now. Typically, if we do an interchange, we want those spaced at least a mile apart. As you can see from this graphic, north of 35th, most of them are half a mile or less to each other. So it gets very complicated with interchanges spaced that close to end up with ramps on top of ramps and weaving, and it's a mess. So we're looking at a couple of different options to accommodate all of these locations. These options include just interchanges and eliminating access at some of those locations that are too close to each other. We're also evaluating frontage roads, which I know West Valley did a study in 2020. We've read through that resolution, and we're definitely keeping that into consideration as we go through this process. So our current schedule, we have started the study, beginning to coordinate with the cities. We have meetings set up with UTA, Salt Lake City. As I mentioned, we already met with the school districts. And we're starting to develop our concept and purpose and need statements. Big thing is, we're starting to reach out to the public. Next week, we actually have our first public scoping meetings. Those will be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We have some flyers that we can share with you guys. You can share with your staff and others in the neighborhood or in the city. We also handed some of those out at West Fest. So some of the communities already been notified. And we've started advertising on our website. I don't think we have had any media out yet, but we'll be getting some media coverage on this as well right before the meetings. We're also doing some active transportation workshops. These will be end of August, and we'll be sure to keep you guys all in the loop on that. We're doing it similar to Salt Lake City, or sorry, I-15's environmental study. There's a group called Smart Growth Workshop, or Smart Growth America. And they do workshops at intersections and just kind of help, give us ideas on how to maintain not just the vehicle access, but pedestrian and bicycle access as well. So those workshops will be coming at the end of August. After that, we will put together our draft environmental documents, have our neighborhood meetings, hopefully around the end of this year. And then we will have our public comment period, hopefully, spring of next year, and wrap up this environmental document in about a year or so. So that's kind of our anticipated schedule at this point in time. We do not have any funding for this section's construction yet. Right now, it's on the plan for 2028, but as things go, who knows where that'll end up. So as I mentioned, we've already started reaching out to various entities. We've already been meeting with the city staff on a monthly basis. And we plan to increase our presentations with you guys to keep you up to speed on what we're looking at and the alternatives that we're coming up with. We've had mailers and posters, as well as videos, already sent out to the general public. And we do have the public open houses getting scheduled and ready to start going out with that. We also have some traditional and social media sent out to the public. And we will have regular meetings with the property owners as well, especially as we start refining the right-of-way, potential right-of-way acquisitions. So here's kind of our outreach timeline. As I mentioned, last week, we started sending out mailers and posters to local businesses, as well as at West Fest. Our scoping meetings are next week. We, like I mentioned, we have neighborhood meetings planned for later this year, and then public hearings early next year. And again, we'll be constantly reaching out to stakeholders and property owners throughout this whole process. So the scoping meetings next week will all be held at Granger High School. On Monday and Wednesday, we will be doing it at 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And then on Tuesday, we opted to do a daytime meeting. That gives an opportunity for some of the businesses to attend during their business hours. So we'll be meeting from 11:30 to 1:00. Feel free to share this with everybody, and we hope to see some of you there. Yeah, hopefully, we get some good input from the community on what they would like to see. We also have been collecting comments throughout all of the Bangeters. So you can check out our website, Bangator 4,100 to California. There's a lot of good information in there, including some of the graphics. I presented a video that we created that kind of outlines in a little bit more detail of what we're looking at right now. You can also email the Bangator team. The great part about the Bangator email and the hotline number, which I'll show on the next slide, is that these are the same numbers that have been used on all the Bangator projects. So if you have a question on any of them, we'll have a whole team that knows who to direct you to, to get those answers. We're also taking paper mill comments in case those are needed. So as I mentioned, here's our hotline tool. We also have some business cards that you can hand out and share those with others. And that hotline is monitored 24/7. So like I said, if you have any questions, somebody will be able to get to you. And then our email, bangator@utah.gov. So that's pretty much where we're at with everything right now. I don't know if you guys have any questions, comments, thoughts at this point?
Anything from the council? My only question, so the mailers you're sending out, are they just like people within 300 feet of the road? Or are you coming, going out further?
Katie would have a better.
Can you go back to the study area? So we follow the study area path pretty closely that goes out some blocks from Bangator. And we went even a little bit broader than that. It's not a lot of detail here. But we tried to get, I think we sent out about 5,000 or so mailers along the corridor to get us started with this one.
And they are in English and in Spanish. And the video that we did on the website is also in Spanish as well. So we're trying to make sure we hit that part of the community as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yep, seeing no other questions. You did a great job.
Thank you. Am I to stop sharing or just exit? Oh, you took over. We're good.
Thank you so much for coming. All right, we're going to now turn the time over to Dan for the garbage and recycling and two resolutions.
Thank you, Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to talk about garbage, or trash, or solid waste, or whatever we call it. And to cover a couple of resolutions. And I appreciate the flexibility on your agenda to just add these into the presentation. So this really is just an update, kind of an annual update of our sanitation program. And I hope that some of this is going to be very redundant to you as we just talk about what services we provide. As you're all residents, you know, and are probably very familiar with the services that we offer. But if this sparks any questions, I'd love to address those. So this is just our Public Works, our sanitation team. Paul Love is the supervisor of the Utility Billing and Sanitation Group. And Ray Hinkle is the guy that many of you have worked with in cleaning dumpsters and other things. And then Randy and Dave, Randy Larson, Dave McEwen, are technicians that manage the work orders. That's actually a picture of Dave, who's retired in about a month. And he's a 10-year employee, and he's been great, and we're sad to lose him. But just so you can see some names there of our team. So our contractor is Ace Recycling and Disposal. And this is kind of an overview of. And this is kind of a overview of their contract timeline. They came under contract in July of two thousand and eighteen. And it's a six year agreement with the option for two additional extensions. After that, and so that contract will expire in July of two thousand and twenty four and we can certainly extend it. Which I anticipate that we likely will, but we'll see and we'll evaluate at that time. But come July of two thousand and twenty six, we will need to for sure. Have a new contractor ready to go. So. Just a feel for where we are timeline on our contract. So most of our waste is taken to the Ace disposed to, to a, a transfer station that's operated and operated by, by Ace disposal. It's on near California Avenue and two fifteen. You see it right on the freeway as you're driving north on two fifteen. But that, that transfer station is operating at capacity and they since. Diverted some of our trash out to the Salt Lake Valley landfill. But most of it still goes to the transfer station and where they load it densely on trucks and haul it out to Fairfield to the Intermountain Regional landfill. So. Anyways, just, just so you know. So this is, the next few slides, I'm just going to describe the services that we provide. And again, you're all residents, you know, and, and you see it, but. So weekly, we, we collect. Trash and, and then every other week we collect a recycle. And actually had our guys, just so you're aware, this, I was interested to know. If every other week is enough and we went out and did a kind of an informal open the lid survey of the recycle cans and it, they weren't full. And so. I feel like for now we're, we're okay on every other week basis and, and if people need to know which week. Their trash is collected, we have a link on our website that there's a map and then they can go look at the calendar and it shows which is their recycle week. Bulky waste. You act like you've got a question. Are you okay?
No, I was just laughing because we just have one person we all follow. So if she messes up, the whole circle messes up.
Every neighborhood needs to have that person.
So now I know where to go with.
Yeah, if that person is out of, out of town, you may, you know.
I know it's on the website.
Yep. The bulky waste program, depending on when you drive around town, you may drive around through a neighborhood and say, why is all this garbage on the, the curb? You all know why. It's a bulky waste program and it's an opportunity for us to, for our residents to get rid of. Stuff, save them a trip to the dump. And we feel like it's a pretty well-used program. Oftentimes, a lot of complaints we get are about. People that aren't following the guidelines about bundles and packages and properly managed waste and. Of, or, or that the waste is out way too early. And so we try to police that and Ray will work with people if they put stuff out too soon or aren't following the guidelines. So we try to keep that. It's a great service, but it's also has potential to look pretty messy if we don't take care of it. The neighborhood dumpster program is not an automatic program. The, the residents need to schedule in advance and they, they work that through Ray Hinkle. And, you know, so from no, March to November. It's essentially a neighborhood cleanup program. So you can't call in and get one dumpster. You have to get together with your neighbors and. Be kind of the responsible person that's going to make sure, that's going to talk to the neighbors and make sure they aren't throwing away their tires and batteries and. Nasty things that they shouldn't be throwing into the dumpsters and making sure they don't get overfilled. We, we don't advertise the locations of these generally. I mean, if you did, they would be full and overflowing every time. And so. The, the intent is to keep this just inside the neighborhood and, and have neighbors talking to each other and putting together. You know, days to, to get rid of the extra stuff and the branches and whatever else needs to be gotten rid of. So, great program. We also get rid of Christmas trees around Christmas. At the end of the year, there's City Park, Westview Park, and then they could also just leave it out on their curb as bulky waste and it'll disappear as well. Glass recycling, we have three locations that people can. Get rid of their glass, the fitness center parking lot, Maverick Center, Lot D over by the, the park and ride. And then our public works shop on thirty six hundred west and twenty hundred south or so. This last year we get a, a, an e-waste and a shredding event, which was very well received. It was awesome. We had a ton of people show up. And get rid of their private documents with social security numbers or whatever else. And they've got a shredding truck. They can sit there and watch them if they wanted to sit and wait. They could sit and watch their own. Their own documents go into the shredder and know that they're, they're destroyed and, and, and then we collected a whole lot of old TVs and microwaves and. Whatever, whatever other e-waste they wanted to get rid of, Ace took it. And, and they do that once a year and it's a great program. This year, GCR Tire reached out to us and said, hey, we'd like to do a service event for the city. And so we combined it with the e-waste and. Shredding event and, and advertised the people to bring their tires that are laying around their yards as well. And that was a. A very well-received event. We had a lot of tires show up. Some that had to kind of be turned back because they were obviously not from a residential application, but. But it, this really is just here. This is not associated with our normal. Trash service. This is just a, a kind of a shout out to GCR for the good thing that they did and we're grateful for, for that event that they provided to the citizens and. We took out a lot of tires. I don't have numbers on how many we took out, but it was good.
Do you think they'll do it again?
I think they will. I wouldn't be surprised if they will. And, and they left. With a, I think there's some lessons learned. We'll put a, definitely put a limit on the number of tires that we can receive from any individual. But they left feeling good about what they had done and it, it really comes down from their corporate, their corporate. Group wants them to do service projects for the communities in which they serve and. And so GCR, this was an awesome opportunity and I think they will do it again. Yeah. So here, this brings us to one of our first resolutions. We'll talk about what this is one oh four, twenty two dash one oh four. We own and maintain a lot of garbage cans. With roughly thirty thousand residents and each of, most of them have a, well, they all have a garbage can. Some have two, some have, most have recycle cans. So it leaves us with a lot of cans to own and maintain. And. And so annually, we just budget a certain amount and kind of know what we go through and either through new customers or replaced cans. And we're coming to the council now proposing to purchase roughly almost nineteen hundred cans. And for a total of roughly a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So, and these, we purchased these cans, kind of a national purchasing co-op so that we. Don't have to actually solicit our own RFP for cans. We can, there's other government entities around this, the country. That have purchased cans and we're able to shop those. Those purchasing contracts and find the best deal for the product that we would like to purchase. So these are totter cans and they're. Very stout and don't break and we like them. And so our recommendation that you. Next week vote to authorize the execution of this resolution. So. Are there any questions before I move forward on? Resolution twenty two dash one oh four on the first cans.
On the cans, when they're damaged, are they just discarded when they're exchanged for new one or are they?
They're recycled. Yeah. Last time I did this presentation, I was a brand new public works director and I didn't know the answer to that question, but I do now and they are recycled. At their shop that Ace comes and gets periodically and, and they shred them and recycle them.
You try to just refurbish them with whatever parts you have.
Yep, we fix, we replace wheels and lids all the time, but at some point the cans, if the structure of the can is gone, then we, we have to replace them and dispose of them. And, and as, as with everything else, they're, they're going up. They were roughly fifty two dollar and eighty cents can this year or last year. And this year they're fifty nine dollars and seventy nine cents can. So. We're seeing, we're seeing that everywhere we go. So maybe that's a recurring theme for this presentation going forward, but. This is kind of an item of, of note that you may just, just be aware of. The, the legislature passed a bill this last year. House Bill three ninety four that requires waste haulers that haul recycled goods. Report to the cities for which they haul the final, like really the, the tonnage and the, of the, and the end location of the material that was actually recycled. So some legislator wants to know how much of our recycled material actually gets recycled. And then this bill requires that we publish that, make that available to the public through our website or a newsletter. So. We're working with Ace to get this information when they have it and I'm curious to know myself. It'd be interesting. So. Just to give you a feel for where we're at on service fees. So a few years ago, the council. When, when we started recycling, recycling was mandatory for everybody, but this council heard from their constituents and realized that there were some people that didn't care to. Have a recycling can. So there's a, with recycling and without recycling. By and large, many, many, a very strong majority of our residents recycle, but there's a few that chose not to, but. You can get monthly service for thirteen dollars or without recycling on fifteen fifty with. And then nine, nine dollars for an additional can and three dollars for an additional recycle can. So. Just to give you a feel for where we stand in relation to surrounding communities. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, but, but I feel like we provide a, a good. Service for the fee that's collected. And our, our fee also does include, you know, it includes the, the bulky ways and the neighborhood dumpster program. For which we don't charge extra for and other cities don't provide that kind of a service. So I feel like we get good value for what, for, for, for the fee that we collect. Just to give you a feel for. Our fund balance. We currently, we actually are operating in a deficit. So we, we spend more than we are taking in, in the sanitation fund. And. And which is okay right now because we have a really healthy fund reserve, reserve balance and. And, but our annual expenditures do exceed the annual revenues. And at some point in the next few years, we'll need to either address that with either a, a service fee increase. Or a reduction in service. So. For now, we're not asking, I think we're okay for, for a year or two and, and, but just know that that, that is out on the horizon somewhere.
Do you know how much we would have to raise the service fee?
No, I don't think it would be drastic. I think it would be a dollar or two, but we really haven't delved into that deeply yet.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're interested, we, we can do that kind of analysis and if you're interested in exploring that sooner rather than later.
There's no sense not covering its own.
Yeah. Well, sure. And that's, if that's the will of the council, we'll definitely go that direction. You bet.
Anybody else want to study?
We'll study that and.
Yes, we got it.
Absolutely. We'll do that. And, and again, the recurring theme, just, just, these are actually contractually built in. You know, this stuff is kind of the reason for this downward trend in the reserve balances is just the fact that. Costs are increasing and, and within our, with our, with, inside of our contract with Ace, we have built in. Fee increases for landfill costs and things like that. And. And those are fixed until July of two thousand and twenty four, at which point we'll need to renegotiate with. Go up, they don't go down. I'm betting they don't go down, but you never know.
So was Ace the only one that responded to the RFP last time?
I don't believe so. I was not.
Just one chose not to.
I know the waste management, I don't believe they submitted a bid, but I don't think they, they were not the only, I believe that there was Republic and Ace, at least that submitted a bid. Yeah. I don't think Waste did and. They may have been, but Ace is a local company, local business, and we're grateful to have them as a, as a local service provider.
Those are landfill fees, right? Is that for the Fairfield landfill or is that?
That's wherever Ace wants to take it, but yeah. And so I don't know what the county's charging them for waste that's being taken to the county. But contractually, we're obligated to pay the amount that was negotiated in the contract originally. And so. So yeah, they could take it to space. That would be an interesting way to, interesting solution. This brings us to our next resolution that we skipped and we're going to talk about now is resolution twenty two dash one oh three. So inside of our contract, Russ negotiated with Ace and, and the. An automatic fee increase. So every two and a, every year, the city automatically will pay Ace an additional two and a half percent. As a cost of living adjustment. Which I think we kind of show here. And so that's, that's built in and it's happened since the contract. So the first one took place in July of two thousand and eighteen. And we've taken, we've increased the fee that we paid to Ace by two and a half percent every year by what's in the contract. And this year they've come to us and said, hey, West Valley City, we really appreciate it. We're struggling to, as everybody else. They're, they're, they're asking for an additional two and a half percent, which to us is a roughly seventy six thousand dollars a year. Just for them to cover their personnel and operating cost increases that they've seen. And I, just to give you context, this, the red line is CPI. And what we've seen over the last years, over the last few years and it's, it was flat, obviously, and then, and then started climbing high and. And so as they're requesting an additional two and a half percent on top of the five percent or two and a half percent that is contractually obligated. It would be my recommendation to the council that you execute this amendment to the agreement with Ace and give them an additional two and a half percent. To cover some of their additional costs that you've seen from.
One year?
This is a one year, one time.
So then it'll go back down?
No, no.
Stay consistent.
Yeah, they, there will not be, there will not be an additional. Next year, if we were to extend this graph out automatically, there will be another green bar. Of an, of the contractual two and a half percent.
Next year?
Mm-hmm. Yes. The, the two and a half, the first two and a half percent is automatic.
Right.
But this current up increase will, the, the price will increase, but then that will be the new price. And then next year's will be increased by two and a, two and a half percent from.
A new price, not the old price would have been.
Yeah, exactly. And so. I've not done this before, but Russ, from what I understand from Russ, this used to be a regular occurring thing that they would come to the city and say, hey, we're struggling, help us out. Which is why this two and a half percent was negotiated originally, but. But given what we've seen, I mean, they obviously haven't made a request in the past couple of years. And given what, what we've seen this year, I would, it would be my recommendation that you pass this. That you authorize us to make this change to their agreement. Some other questions on this particular item?
Say a comment in general about. Our waste and I've heard, actually last night from a, I've read a neighbor of mine that when the trash is dumped. They're not, there's some left in the bottom. I don't know if it's an isolated incident. I, I feel like mine, I've never had that happen, but. I don't know if that's been a complaint before where residents feel like, or there's garbage left to the bottom.
Occasionally we'll get that kind of complaint and I think it's usually just related to how packed tightly it's packed. I mean, it could be that they're just not shaking it enough and giving it enough time to talk, but. I can check and see, it's an interesting thing. I'm not really, I don't know. I don't take the complaint calls, but I'd be curious to know if that is something that we get frequently. I'll ask.
Going back to the recycling transparency bill.
Yeah.
When will we have that?
I'm guessing, I don't recall what the bill requires. I think it's, it would be a full year from the time that the bill had passed. Would be the time that Ace would have to, or at least that it took you, it was signed by the governor. So I would imagine it's probably about a year or so from now. That's, so that's, that current resolution. And then the, the last item I just want to talk about, just to give you a little background. Ace obviously has a, they've, they have a, they place a high priority on sustainability. And they recently just bought an electric garbage truck that services only West Valley City. Mostly because they're housed right here and it's a, and we're, our terrain is flat. And so they get really good efficient use out of that truck and off one charge in a day, they can get ten to eleven hours of trash pickup. And, and roughly, I don't know, nine hundred to a thousand. Cans lifts. And so they're pretty excited about it and they came to us and are. They're excited to celebrate that as, as well. And they've actually offered to the city to place on the, the back quarter. The panel of the side of that truck, a, a West Valley City logo. And just to recognize our partnership with them and we're grateful for that. So Sam and his team are working on, on getting them a logo and, and. And seeing that laid out, but we're also going to do a kind of a little social media story on, on this garbage truck. So. Anyway, thought I'd end on a fun note and take any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
The shred event, you know, when the next one is.
It'll be next spring sometime. We haven't set a date. Yeah, I imagine it's, this first one was in May, so. It'll be May sometime.
So you do it once a year?
We do it once a year. Yep.
So do you know how many trucks Ace has in West Valley?
I don't, but I can find out.
Just if they could, you know, do all of their trucks for us, electric? Just if they could, you know, do all their trucks for us, electric?
Uh, they, I don't know, that's a good question, um, they have, uh, so this truck was purchased with with a federal grant. It's substantially more expensive than a traditional CNG truck that they normally run. That's what they they normally operate with natural gas trucks in our city. Um, they have very few diesel vehicles in their fleet that services our town. But they, this truck was purchased heavily subsidized with the, by the federal government, um, which makes it almost. You know, it doesn't quite get you there, but because of their commitment to their, to sustainability, they they did this and. So I would be surprised in the near future if we see the fleet of electrics go. Substantially big, I mean, if I were to guess, if if this truck can do a thousand pickups a day, then I'm guessing we have thirty trucks, but I don't know. Or no, never mind, I'm not going to try to do that math in my head. Thirty divided by five or six, five days probably, so maybe six trucks, I don't know.
The the trucks that take the trash out to Fairfield.
Those will be diesel, yeah, those are semi trucks, yep, those are uh, they they cram them in really tight and and send a really heavily. Very densely loaded truck out there, just a semi truck, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll turn the time to Mr. Welch for our fraud risk assessment.
Eric Council, I'm pleased to be here, I don't know how I follow and act like that, Dan was pretty engaging about trash and garbage. I feel really well unprepared when it comes to making something like that exciting. As you'll, as you're aware by now, uh, the state auditor's office. Um, has put together a framework to try and reduce uh, the incidence of fraud, waste and abuse in the state. Uh, periodically, you see things hit the, hit the news newspapers and the news uh, channels. Where someone's done something either overtly to uh, misuse public funds or else out of ignorance, and so the state auditor has felt. Uh, responsibility to um, help local municipalities and uh, state organizations. To be able to have the tools that they need to minimize uh, the abuse of public funds, and so that's where this comes from. So each year, uh, we complete the fraud risk assessment, hopefully you have a copy on your desk, one appears kind of small, it's about the best we can do. Uh, because it's page format, but uh, there are nine questions that we go through that we do, this is a self-assessment. That uh, was actually built upon what's considered the gold standard of um. Of uh, fraud control by COSO, which is um, it's an organization that everybody just calls it COSO. Because it's actually the Committee of Sponsoring Organizations of the Treadway Commission, it's a big, it's a big name. And also the Government Accounting Office, but um, they put together this this framework based on what they consider the gold standard for fraud. And waste control, not Dan's waste. Um, so what we do is we go through this personally and and as an accounting department, we assess the city's. Controls in each of these areas, uh, the first one is separation of duties. Under that separation of duties, there's actually a questionnaire that has another twelve questions. It has to do with how do we conduct our uh, business operations with the control of cash, the control of checks, control of credit card operations. Uh, purchasing, are there um, multiple levels of of approval that have to go through? So no one person can actually spend the money themselves entirely and not have that uh, looked at. Uh, money can't be received by someone who also controls the books, so they can't, um, so they have some other eyes on it, so that goes under the dual control. And then another part of it, the the next one is on, do we have written policies? And these have to do with things like conflicts of interest, ethics, they have um, travel. Uh, do we have a way for employees and and citizens to um, to report suspected abuse, which we do. I think you know by now, at least I hope you do, that we take this very seriously and we try and uh, we've tried to implement every. Possible control that we can within reason uh, to provide a safe operating. Environment for the resources of the city. Uh, they also go through the licensing and certification and education. To make sure that your finance personnel and those that are controlling the funds in the city are uh, competent in their jobs, they require additional training. Uh, we meet all of these criteria with regards to certifications, with regards to uh, continuing training for professional organizations. And we participate in those actively and provide our input in the creation of policy. Um, we also have a uh, a couple of things that are unique to us that we put in place before this was actually um, proposed. One of those is the fraud hotline, which we do have on our website, you can go on there and if someone suspects fraud, uh, report something there or else. As an employee, uh, if someone observes something, they can anonymously report that and myself and the city attorney will look into those. Those allegations and and we'll take care of those, they can be assured that we will. That also goes to a couple of people, I mentioned the city attorney and myself, so no one of us is responsible for all of those things. Uh, we also have um, an informal audit, they'd ask, they asked for a formal internal audit. Um, function, we actually do that ourselves, uh, we have one of our accountants in particular who's uh, designated. And has auditing experience, he actually worked for a municipal auditor uh, in um. What is that? Uh. Anyway, it was one of the other states, what's the state with with um, Mount Rushmore in it? There you go, South Dakota, anyway, he moved from South Dakota, he has audit experience and he's he's been a great resource to us in developing some of our audit procedures. And many of you have been contacted by him, many of the departments have, and we look at everything from HR to CED to finance internally. And uh, we help people implement practices that keep them out of headlines and keep them out of jail, so to speak. So that's very good, uh, we also have a formal audit committee, which we uh, meet and some of you are members of that committee. And we discuss the audits that we receive from our various entities. In the next couple of weeks, you'll see engagement letters from our audit committee uh, for uh, for. Different types of audits that we'll be doing, as we've grown, we've seen the need to audit different operations, including things like the. Uh, the housing authority, the uh, the theater, of course, the city, um, those type of operations, so. We do have letters to engage with them that you'll be seeing in the in the city council meetings. This particular score, we actually scored three hundred ninety-five out of three hundred ninety-five, which the state auditor uh, considers a low risk. Um, type of entity, uh, we work really hard to get that and I would be happy to answer any questions.
So on number five.
Yes.
Or you have yes and twenty points on our copy that is signed by yourself and Mr. Pyle. It shows no and zero points.
That has been updated, uh, I don't, looks like that one did not make it through uh, to the recorder.
You had refreshed, okay.
Okay, yes, so all of the members of the board's permissions and the city council have completed this training, and so we, that has.
So everybody's gone on that audit?
Yes, they have, and and Nicole has written certificates for the completion of each of those training opportunities.
I've taken it so many times every year that it's, I don't remember who I took it for. So is the same thing on the separation of duties, the nos have been changed to yeses, or is that one, your next?
The, whi- which one?
On your next page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, well, okay, so, no, that's fine. Um, I'd be happy to go over that one, if you'll notice, the only one that has a no on there is, it says, are all the people who are able to receive cash and check payments different? From all the people who are able to make general ledger entries. Uh, in our case, we've checked the one that's MC, which stands for mitigating control, so we have uh, controls that. That mitigate the risk that would be associated with someone that can actually access the general ledger and cash. The exa- the example of that, and actually the only example, is uh, Scott, Scott Freckleton, our treasurer. So in the nature of his job, he has to receive cash for the city, that is his job, to oversee and make sure that every dollar comes into the city. Part of his job also is receipting those funds, which gives him a control into the general ledger. The mitigating controls in our, there are that every general led- ledger entry has to be reviewed by. Uh, at least two people and it's overseen and reviewed by our chief auditor, I mean, I'm sorry, our chief accountant. And uh, and then if need be, myself, so we have controls that do cover that dual control. But we mentioned no there because in that case, someone does, is receiving money and accessing the general ledger.
And so that's here at City Hall, correct?
That is correct.
What about at the animal shelter?
They don't make general, general ledger entries out.
Okay, but they receive cash and somebody double checks that one?
That's correct, so in all of our cash operations, uh, they they're required to keep a cash register, we have a cash receipt. Um, accounting process, which would either be through their cash register or else through uh, some other type of cash receipting software. Uh, we require those reports to be kept, we require a daily report prepared and they're balanced every single night. Those come to the treasurer who reviews them and make sure that they balance, if they don't balance. We sit down with them and we figure out why and we help them uh, figure out how to make them balance, and that's, we do a lot of that.
Okay. Now, I had a citizen was concerned that cash could just not be recorded at the animal shelter, so.
Yeah, no, that that's a good question, and I'm glad that people ask questions like that because uh, cash is where, you know, there's a lot of exposure there. Cash and credit cards are probably what give the um, uh, the state auditor uh, the greatest pause in their, in their controls. And in smaller entities, they have issues where it is the same person that's the bookkeeper, the same person receiving the cash and. We have the uh, the benefit that we have large enough staff and we have sophisticated enough systems that we can require those uh, controls. So even in a place like the animal shelter, for example, there are two people at least that review that deposit that goes through. And there are controls in place, now, can we control everything, is it never going to happen? We can't control that, but we do the very best we can to give people tools, to educate them, and also create a tone at the top, so. Management, they know that management doesn't put up with uh, with messing with uh, with taxpayer resources and funds. And that comes right down from Wayne, right through the department heads, right through each of the departments, they know that a high level of uh. Of ethical behavior is demanded, and as you know, with the annual training that we're required. That annual training that we have with the city, it requires us to take that pledge of ethics, which is also another recommendation of the state auditor.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up with that question?
Yes.
So two people at the shelter, when they counted the money, what are they going to bring to the, bring to the bank, directly to the bank, or to bring it to City Hall?
Yeah, we handle, we have a ca- cash a couple of different ways. We, for some operations, we do employ a deposit that goes directly to the bank, we usually use an armored car service for that. Uh, depending on the season, it might be the family fitness center, might be the golf courses, uh, obviously, if we probably don't need armored car services when. You know, in the winter for the golf courses, for example, uh, but when they start to get up uh, to larger amounts, we consider that. It is a cost, and in some cases, the cost outstrips the benefit that we get, if you're paying a hundred and fifty bucks for a, a run of a fifteen hundred dollar deposit. Deposit, it starts to kind of eat into your profits and, but on the other hand, we want both the employee and the cash to be safe. Um, so usually, the smaller deposits will come to Scott in treasury and they'll usually come in, they always come in a sealed bag. Or else in a locked, uh, a locked container, we get them from the court, we get them from the cultural center, and uh, they will. Uh, in the case of some of the sealed bags, the deposit's already prepared, but they have to, they're accompanied with a report that balances to that bag. So we'll compare the report with the deposit, we'll take the deposit directly to the bank and the bank deposit is counted in our presence. Was that as much fun as trash?
Okay, thank you. All right, move on to our council calendar, were any questions or concerns on that one? Seeing none, we'll move on to potential future agenda items.
I have one.
Okay.
I uh, I want to bring it up about a letter from uh, city manager about uh, Mavis Center. I think it's very, very good information, I appreciate it very much to send it out to us and I know the history, a little bit of history now. I know we have a couple marriages uh, on this deal, Sentinel. I believe is also Diamond and also Utah, Chris Lee's there, I just wonder what percentage they they have with us. But yes, yeah, if you can have that later, you know, I'm saying, not today, but maybe later, you can send information through email and maybe so we can. Have the idea uh, what percentage uh, they have in in this deal with us. The thing is, uh, uh, also, I read that two pages there about. About the uh, you know, uh, she put it, I meant about the uh, open market, he mentioned about uh, in Hawaii. I think in our city here, it's still give us an icon place, I mean, that place is going to be icon in our city and us, state Utah. And as long as we're here, we're not going to turn that one into a saloon place or open market. But one thing I uh, I agree with Wayne a hundred percent, that one is uh, about the buyer, very limited buyer of. For this one, if we go through that route, um. Have to find a very unique buyer, but I I I believe, you know, SP, SPS right across the street from uh, from uh, Mavis Center. Select or follow uh, services uh, company there, they purchased a. A movie theater and as well, that that was nine and at that time, I believe it's about four, five years and it turned into the. Uh, the office, very nice office. Um, I also knows right now, Twister, Alan Musk, uh. Trying to buy, I mean, trying to maybe stay in San Francisco for headquarters, maybe try to find somewhere, but I also know them. Senator Romney, Mitt Romney is, tried to get him to Utah. So you never know, you know what I'm saying, it's very unique uh, buyer, can can, if we go on that route and maybe Mayor can write a letter to him and do something like. You know what I'm saying, but I think the property tax is very good property tax, about thirty-four point one million dollars. As a big uh, big thing for our city and that one, they're going to be turned into a big amount for the property tax this year. It's a total, it's a fifty-one million dollars, it's a big, big one, um. So I I I, I I'm leaning towards uh, doing something with that, try to get that money and try to do something with our city. Use that money to do something else, our city, um. Slather, I know it's a buyer, very unique buyer, kind of five very unique buyer, I don't never know, maybe Alan Musk would want to take this one to be a headquarters of Twister. So uh, yeah, I just bring it up, that's my feeling about that two uh, two pages of that letter. And I do want to share with you is uh, can be done, um, just. Going to find the right person, right buyer, maybe go down route.
Okay, thank you, anybody else?
Still waiting on two. Responses for KPIs, I won't say any names. I did. We're starting to narrow it down.
It's on my calendar, but it never raises to the top somehow.
Scott, I just got my KPIs and A three in for work today, so yours is is right on the list, right next.
Just a question, maybe it can be followed up with an email or tell me where I can go, but. During the Bangator presentation, she referenced the twenty twenty resolution, it sounded like with regards to fronted roads. You know what's one of that is, or tell me.
As a council, we ordered a study and they did the study for us and gave us, and then we picked the one that we liked the best of. They had like six different options, it could be. How it could be built, and then we narrowed it down to the one we liked the best, so. We can probably, somebody could probably forward you that presentation and then you could see, and then the one we actually chose, and Scott, okay. If we could get it to both of them, yeah.
Great.
We had really good discussions over Zoom about it, but. Yeah, so it wasn't even a really great discussion, I think they're better in person, but anyway. Think nothing else, we'll go to council reports. Anybody?
Thanks for your efforts on the parade, that was a lot of fun.
You're welcome, thank you for participating, everybody, I appreciate it.
Not just the parade, but all all West West.
Yeah. And the fireworks seemed to be over the top this year, so. Had good comments about them, I don't know if they were much different than in the past, but.
Twice as much.
Twice as much, that's maybe why they. Yeah, that's true, but even each night I got. Yeah, that's true. But even each night I got compliments of it even being better than in the past, so. It may have just been loss of memory, but. It's good that they all thought it was awesome.
It was the guest suitor.
Yeah.
I had a ride along on Friday night with Officer Cordova and. Really appreciate, especially during West Fest, them allowing me to do that. So it was a great, great thing.
We had a successful audit committee meeting again. Our, our external auditors completed two audits of some some minor. Departments or or events in our, in our city. One was for housing at Campbell Court. And another one was maybe for the. The. Performing Arts Center, maybe, or Cultural Center. Anyway, they both came back really great. And 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 like Jim said, we're going to have the engagement letters for next year's audits coming up soon.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we'll move on to a review of the special RDA meeting next week and we have Mr. Jackson here present that.
All right, Jeff Jackson with West Valley City RDA in the Commonwealth Development Division. We have a really cool opportunity. To land a phase two. For the Sandstone Godfrey Project. It's just west of the Mount W corridor. So if you guys are familiar with this, it's a thirty-six million dollar capital investment into the city. It's six hundred and three thousand square feet between the two buildings. And as we got into it, it became very apparent that Rocky Mountain Power was making them oversize their infrastructure. So instead of. Making them do this, which is what they needed, they made them do this. And so they're trying to get as much as they can for future use, which of course causes budget problems. Then they went.
Mountain's doing that.
Rocky Mountain, yes.
They're trying to get more future use.
Yes, they want them to oversize their power infrastructure and and Magna Water did the same thing. So instead of looping. Directly through their project, they're having them loop some extra sort of water connections for future use as well. So. Causing some overruns as well. And so, you know, luckily for us as a city, as as a RDA, we generate TIF from these projects. From this project, if they're built, post-performance projects. So in this case, three point five million could be generated over the next eight years. And of that, we want to share back in seven hundred thousand of that to help offset some of these over costs. Infrastructure overruns that we're dealing with. So instead of. Them paying for this much, they're paying for this much. They're getting exactly what they're paying for. And we're using the tool exactly worth for, you know, what it's been created for. To to get us infrastructure in the long run and in the near run. This will give us infrastructure for both. So it's, it meets all of our metrics. It's nineteen, we're sharing nineteen percent of the tax increment that would be generated. The RDA retains two point eight million and that's to be used within the project area by law. And and it gives us exactly what we need. And so it meets all of our our project requirements, our our return requirements. It exceeds them in fact. And so it puts us in a really good spot so that we can wrap up this project, get our phase two out of the ground. Before anything gets weirder and it it just does what we want it to do. It's a great setup. So any questions?
I see nineteen percent up there and I see twenty percent.
Maybe it's nineteen point eight. So it could be rounded up or rounded down depending on what you're looking at.
Not me.
Not as interesting as trash or fraud, so.
A lot more money now.
Yes.
Maybe. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, do we have a need for a closed session?
No, ma'am.
Okay, just have one last action. All in favor, please say aye. And we are adjourned. Okay, thank you. I just trust him.